It is seven o'clock. We will call the regular village board meeting to order. If no one arrives to say the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Police, please call the board.
Mr. Hocke. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Here.
Mr. Ham.
Here.
Mr. Bowden.
Here.
And Mr. Hen.
Okay. Approval or corrections to the minutes of September 25th, 2017, regular village board meeting? Do you have those minutes in your packets? Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented? If not, a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Jones, second by trustee March.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Ham.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Accounts payable and payroll, payroll pay period ending 9/23/17, in the amount of $46,526.92. Accounts payable, general fund, $29,186.75. Water and sewer fund, $15,355.08. Giving a total of all funds, $44,541.83. Are there any questions on any of the bills or the payroll? If not, a motion to pay the bills and the payroll.
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Ham.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. Ham.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes. How about comment and your questions? Anybody on any non-agenda item? Move on to our reports of committees. No police chiefs report this evening. We have a couple things on the agenda further down. Chief Moore today was attending the funeral services for Chief Jeff Weisberger over in Beecher. Chief Weisberger passed away suddenly this past week after a really unfortunate accident. And, you know, I just wanted to say that the thoughts and the prayers of the entire village of Piattone are with the community of Beecher and chief's family and everybody that works over in Beecher. He was a longtime serving police officer in chief and was a great friend, you know, to the village of Piattone. And it was just really, just a tragedy. Chief has been over there all day today, helping out and attending the services. Engineers report.
Yes, just one thing for the lift station on Rant T Road. The generator's been installed for a while, but we've been waiting for the Nycor service to come in. And they, the easement worked out, they should be installing that service within the next few days and get the generator.
Good.
I see a bunch of holes being punched up on Route 50.
Yeah.
What is that exactly?
Right now AT&T started doing their relocations. So there's a lot of fiber acting cables running underground at the intersections. So they're pretty much moving them out or lowering them to accommodate the new project. The same thing will be happening for Nycor, Gasman's Comcast is underground and the combat poles are going back. So it's going to be a lot of utility relocations going on this fall in preparation for the project starting this fall.
That'd be like phase one, the beginning of project. What's the next phase after the relocation?
The actual, the village contract will actually most likely start the first thing in April is their plan to start, you know, removing the existing road where it needs to excavate for the lighting source.
So Corning will be closed?
For a while. West, the west, sorry, the east side will be closed. There'll be a detour for the east side of Corning, which will go, you know, around 50 and ramp around Beecher. And then around the east side of Corning, both main will be just, you know, maybe Wayne Rogers.
The west side.
Sorry.
Yeah.
And around 50 will stay a little bit, but, you know, Wayne Rogers.
Can I ask you a question about the sidewalks? Is there anything planned? Like, so they put sidewalks in when they redid this.
Yeah.
Are those going to be torn out and?
They are, yeah. We talked about it in the last meeting.
Yeah. Now, what about going south from, from the corner there? There's never been like a reliable sidewalk to go to the grocery store.
No. And with, during the phase one of the project, because of the limit right away, there wasn't really room with dividing to put a new sidewalk in. So, but Ida has a complete street policy. So their solution was to widen shoulders out. So the shoulders will be wider for, you know, for everyone walking.
Oh, so that can be a sidewalk?
No, just at the corner, there'll be kind of like a corner angle sidewalk for the crossings. And then there'll just be the shoulder, just to the south.
Going south.
To the north there'll be a sidewalk.
So south at Speedway Boulevard to the grocery store, it'll be just a shoulder, no sidewalk. How wide will that be?
I believe the shoulders be three feet.
Eight or stuff?
Eight.
Oh, eight. Okay. How far south will that go?
Pretty much to the project, end of the project limits, which is about by the drugstore.
So it'll go all the way to that shopping area?
Yeah.
And so if they start the project beginning in April, once our hopeful we're all done and it's ready to go?
I believe it's 100, four hundred and ninety or 108, 14 days. But that's days that are, you know, weather, except for whatever things. So the traffic signals hopefully will be ordered now so they'll be ready in the summer. So I think it's over five months.
That's long. There won't be the temporary traffic signals hung on the wire, they'll go right to the poles and everything else?
Though, I don't think they'll be temporary because there was nothing there previously. So I think it'll just be, yeah, maybe it'll start some people.
Turn lanes, turn lanes on Route 50 turning?
Yep. There'll be left turn lanes on Route 50 for turning into Route itself.
There will be any turn lanes on Route 50 itself to turn on Corning?
Yes, that's what I was talking about. There'll be left turn lanes on Route 50, left and self lanes to turn on both sides of Corning.
Yeah. How about Corning? Will that have turn lanes?
I believe the east side, I can't remember, so the east side may not, the west side would. And it's wider and stuff. Peter, just because you brought up that sidewalk issue, just, that sidewalk here, that's me. Yeah, Ida was not supposed to let go sidewalks, they were aware of this job. They just did it and tell us so.
Well, we have a sign up there on Light Pool that says Corning Avenue will be lit at night so people can see that.
Yes, we actually went with how we deal with the street signs, so it'll be very visible. We got those because we, you know, the electric funding, we made those and repainted it black so it'll look nicer.
Any other questions for the committee? Thank you. All right. No old business, we'll move on to new business. Item A, Boy Scout Troop 315 requests permission for village white canvas on October the 23rd, 2017, and October the 30th, 2017, for the purpose of selling tickets for the 26th Annual Spaghetti Dinner to be held on November the 4th. And we have representatives from the Boy Scouts here. If you could give us your name and tell us what you got to say.
My name is Travis Bush. We are here to ask permission for Boy Scout Troop 315 to canvass the town on October 23rd and the 30th, Spaghetti Dinner tickets. There will be at least three groups each week, and we'll have an adult with each group.
Our event will take place on November 4th at the Piattone American Legion Hall from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Along with the spaghetti, we will serve salad, plain, and garlic bread, and dessert. Milk, coffee, and juice to drink. We also offer carryouts for those who do not want to stay and eat, and thank you.
Very good. Yeah, this has been a longstanding tradition, I know. Very exciting.
So we'll second.
I was going to say, any questions to the board? I guess not. A motion by trustee March and a second by trustee Jones to approve the canvassing of the village on the 23rd of October and the 30th of October. Did we say what times we're canvassing?
It is from 6:00 p.m. until about quarter to 8:00.
Okay. Very good. This is, oh, yeah. You got the motion and the second.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Ham.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Did you all print?
Yes, we did.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, guys.
You guys don't have to say it.
It's a school mic, sorry.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Item B, David Rock, police pension board report.
Hello. I believe everybody has the report. And I apologize if I didn't have my calendar. It was supposed to be here at the last meetings. My apologies to you guys.
No problem.
You can cut my salary in half.
I will double it instead.
Okay. I appreciate that. The fund is still severely underfunded. Had an increase in the ending assets to $1,300,000. Had a 2% return this last year, which was very surprised for our minimal amount that we can have in the stock market. 10% did actually provide us a pretty nice return for that $150,000 out of the $1,300,000. And the reason why $150,000 is slightly more than the 10% limit is that we've gone under the reading and the interpretation that we can have 10% in the stock market based upon not market value, but on the cost. So we've been able to have our slightly more than 10% as a result of the growth in the stock portfolio being faster than the overall growth in the total outstanding assets. And understand that each year the Department of Insurance comments that we're supposed to drop it back down, but I think legally we're okay being at our cost balance. So the unfunded liability on the pro forma actually decreased from 4.3 million to just under $4 million. And that was primarily because of the higher-than-anticipated growth in the stock portfolio. The contribution from the village last year, the employer contribution of $186,000 was under the levy requirement of $311,000, which is the second year this has occurred. The employer contribution last year of $171,000 was under the levy requirement of $256,000. So we've had two years in a row for now, a total of about a quarter of a million dollars underfunding of the statutory requirement into the fund. Another reason for the increase, or I should say the decrease in the unfunded liability was the annual payroll was down, which is one of the significant aspects of the formula that goes in. And last year our payroll was calculated, actual $445,000, which is more in line with what it historically has been. I'm not for certain what occurred the year before, where the payroll was $462,000. So that was another impact. We have now five annuitants in the plan, up one annuitant. And we still have eight active members. And it's split, four vested, four not vested at the current time. So our, excuse me while I adjust a few things here. Like I said, I was actually quite surprised at our 2% return when it was all calculated out this past year. The levy requirement, because the formula is based upon a 5% return, I'm requesting that you contribute the difference between 5% and 4% for additional $55,000 for a total of $330,000 for this next year. Up in the graph, I have split out this last year, normal cost and amortization of the unfunded portion. And the, I think there's some value there on understanding what the actual cost of the last year of the fund was versus how much is needing to be contributed from the past unfunded portion. So the normal cost is running, was $139,000 year before, $118,000 is projected for this coming year. The amortization of the unfunded portion, $171,000, and then $160,000. So even if you were to fully fund the unfunded liability, the normal cost of the fund is going to run about $125,000. So just to kind of put that in the back of your mind of where that is. And the normal cost, if you just cover the normal cost, year in and year out, at the lower return on the investments, you'll end up becoming an accrued unfunded liability contribution that also needs to be made. So I'm just putting that kind of in perspective. And the other aspect of it is the, is the risk of the investment portfolio and also the life pool. With eight, an eight-member active pool that gives you a high, or not a very high diversification of the risk of that pool. So that's another big impact that right now, I'd say we probably did gain in that. But one unfortunate incident and with only eight lives to spread one unfortunate accident across leaves you with a very negative return compared to the actuarial assumptions. We continue to ladder out our investments in the CDs and maintain 10% in the stock market until the fund gets over $2.5 million. That's our limit, is 10% in the stock market. And going out into bonds with this small of a dollar portfolio doesn't really justify it. This will lead into the rest of the discussion is that the village is in the process of selling the waterfront. And we've got a huge liability here that using to sell the asset to cover our current liability would be a very prudent decision, I think. And it would provide the pensioned investments to then become, get over the $2.5 million that allows us to go up to 40% in stocks. And also provide enough in the fixed income portfolio to then look at going at, in governments and municipal bonds to supplement a laddered CD portfolio.
Any questions for the board?
Do you pick individual stocks?
We're just in an aggressive stock fund, domestic, which is one of the requirements, it'd be domestic. So, and it's an aggressive one because that, from the standpoint, you know, there are some people say, well gee, why are you going aggressive? Because we're only 10%, you know? We can get aggressive there because we still have 90% in basically cash. Now, if we were to get, you know, a large cash infusion, I'd probably would, my recommendation would be to go initially out and ladder out into the fixed investments with a dollar-cost average going into the stock market. Sure wouldn't want to take and throw it all out there at a $22,000 dial and have it be right at the top of the bubble. I would much rather ladder out or dollar-cost average in over time and forego some potential upside and not have the risk on a substantial correction and jumping in all at once.
So, once you get $2.5 million, then you can invest up to 60% besides?
Forty, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's 40% in the, in stocks.
Okay.
And then, do I have it?
60. So we're at 1.3 right now?
Correct.
Right? So?
Another million.
Another million, two. Can you put a stop in on a fund like you have so if the bubble does burst, you can dump it without feeling the full impact?
I'm sure you could, but with only 10%, I don't see that as a, you write it. And because you, you pull and miss on the, on the return back if it's just a short term. Unless you've got a better crystal ball and can tell me when it truly is a bubble and it's bursting and it's going to continue a multi-day downslide or multi-month downslide, then I'd like to know that for my own personal portfolio as well.
Any other questions?
I just think it's something to think about when we do get the cash. I know, you know, I can't see us, you know, doing the whole unfunded liability, but it might be prudent to try to get to that $2.5 million state so we can invest it more.
That's definitely something out of your committee that you guys can, can talk about. And, you know, we're not going to see that, you know, until sometime next year. So depending on what the closing is. Something that we can definitely have a discussion about.
Can you, for us new people on the boards, can you give us a little history? It says when the pension, police pension was established, police lives were moved from the IRMRF to the police pension, and then the prior contributions remained with the IMRF. So essentially, the village paid all of the pension obligations throughout the years. And at some point, there was a decision made to move out of the IMRF to the special fund.
That was a referendum, referendum passed by the village to make that change. Don't hold me to it, somebody might know the year better than.
It was 2006, 2007?
Yeah. And the, and part of it was that we're in a growth, you know, the area was seeing population growth. And you're required to go to a individual, move out of IMRF to an individual police pension. I believe it's $5,000. $5,000 population. And it was basically, at that time, thought that that was going to, you know, just was around the corner. It was probably going to happen.
We were anticipating that, and we were also looking at retention, you know, of officers. So the thought process was, you know, with downstate pension, it was a better attraction, you know, to keeping people here for the long term, you know, in position.
So when the, under the rules on a downstate police pension is formed, the contributions that the police officers have been, that have made, that had been made to the IMRF get transferred, just strictly their contribution portion, not the investments or anything on it. Just their contribution gets moved to the police pension. All the prior village contributions, all the earnings remain in IMRF. And at that point in time, the IMRF was overfunded. So there was about, it was anticipated there would be, there was going to be about a 10-year period of time that the IMRF was going to be overfunded, that there weren't going to have to be any additional contributions made outside of the employee contributions going in. 2008 happened, and it didn't last 10 years. That it dropped and additional, and the village had to make, start making contributions. IMRF is not as easy to get along with, I guess is my way of saying it. Is they send the bill and you have to pay it, the unfunded portion or the contribution requirement. You can't short IMRF over $100,000. It's been done with the police pension fund for the last two years.
At what point is it possible, what number does it take so it sustains itself with no more village contributions, just employee contributions?
Never.
Never.
Under the actuarial formula, if you put in $4 million, we could get a 5% return. And our loss exposed, or the cost for benefits fell within the assumptions, then you would just be making the normal cost, which right now is running about $100,000. And it was $120,000. That $120,000 is what it takes in order to fund for the anticipated cost for that year's benefits that were provided to the police officers, the active police officers. Police officer putting in 10% and it's 9.8. I don't exactly know what the number is. I believe it's 9.8% of police salaries go into the fund. And then the under a defined benefits plan, the sponsor makes up all the risk. It's one of the negatives, or a positive, depending on how you look at it. If you can hope to do returns, that was a positive back in the 60s and 70s. It hasn't been such a positive since. And keeping payroll down, going with, when you have openings, I don't know if you can legally do this, but get a tier two higher, not a tier one higher. That'll decrease your future liability. Just can't, just got to do it legally, can't age discriminate. But if you've got two candidates that are side by side equal, wants a tier one, meaning that they're coming, they've already been in the police pension fund and qualify for the tier one benefits, when they come here, they'll continue to have tier one benefits. If it's a brand-new employee, has not been in police pension in the past, they'll come in as a tier two.
What's the cost savings per year? I know it'd be based on salaries or whatever. What would be the approximate cost savings for the village?
I won't put a dollar to it because I have no idea. Biggest difference is the early payouts for retirement. I have to look up what the exact differentials are. But was it after 20 years and 55?
20 years and 50.
20 years and 50 is a tier one?
Yes.
And tier two is?
I don't remember the tier two. You have to look it up. But it's longer. And a tier two, tier two is anybody hired after 2011. So if they were another department before them, they come in as tier one. If it's a new hire after that date, it's a tier two. If it's a new hire after that date, it's a tier two.
Have many villages gone to a two-tier system?
It's automatic. It's automatic on the hire date by the state, you know, pension reform back at, at that point in time, when they did their semi-pension reform. I'll call it a semi-pension reform.
And it's, and the Supreme Court ruled that you, you can't take away future benefits even though they haven't earned them. Sorry, I was a little out of tune there. I don't necessarily agree with that ruling.
But the liability calculates if it's a tier one or a tier two employee, correct?
The liability accrues, yes.
But you're calculating whether or not our, our staff is a tier one or a tier two?
Correct.
So it changes if a, if a tier one leaves and a tier two comes in, that would lower our future liability?
Yes.
Yes.
At some point, yeah. Because the tier two benefits are lower.
Right.
And the time is longer.
Time is longer, if the data's staying.
Right, yes. I mean, the, the big one, I mean, be able to start taking pension draws at age 50. I mean, that's time value money cost is significant.
Well, thank you, Dave, I appreciate the information and appreciate everything that the police pension board does.
Hey, it's a school loan, I'm going to.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay. Item C, acceptance of resignation from police department of Brian King, effective 10/14/17. We have a letter. Dear Chief Lord, I am writing to announce my resignation from the Peotown Police Department effective on October 14, 2017. I know I have scheduled the work at Peotown High School football games on the 13th, and I am still willing to do so if needed. This was not an easy decision to make. This past year has been very rewarding. I've enjoyed working for you and the rest of the department, which is a successful team dedicated to the village and its people. It has been a pleasure working for you, with you, and for you. Thank you for the opportunities for growth that you have provided me. I truly will never forget my time here or the officers in this department. I wish you and the department all the best. If I could be of any help during the transition, please don't hesitate to ask. I wanted to hand you this letter personally, but due to working nights, I decided to slide it under your door to give you notification as soon as I possibly could. I would like to come in sometime today and meet with you to discuss this. So, I need a motion to accept the letter of resignation of Brian A. King, effective October the 14th, 2017.
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Hamm.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hamm?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. One thing trustee Hack spoke with me briefly about over the weekend was a concern that he had, and this is something that I think maybe I could refer to administrative oversight. I don't know if on, in our policy manual, if we have anything where we have somebody that comes in, we pay for the training and so forth, send them to school, then they leave shortly thereafter, you know, not a year, you know, six months, whatever. But no, I don't know if we have it in our policy manual. I haven't had a chance to go back.
Not in the manual, but we did get money back on him from Illinois.
Okay. But it's just something that we maybe want to look at, you know, putting something in, some kind of a stipulation that if, no matter what position, whether it's the police or public works or anywhere, if it's something that we can write in someplace that they have to be here for so long, or else there's some kind of a, a way to recoup on the schooling.
What's the approximate cost of schooling for?
I don't know. Yeah, I said I haven't had a chance to talk with chief about it after trustee Hack and I had that conversation, but.
We haven't had a lot of turnover.
No, we've been pretty fortunate.
In the back years, you know, it was a brand-new police officer, if he has to go all the way through PTI and uniform and blah, blah, everything else, you're probably looking at about eight grand out the door. So, and that's depending upon how fast they get through field training.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, something I think that we can talk about either police, well, I think maybe administrative oversight's a good place to have that discussion. Okay. I just wanted to say that before I forgot. Item D, change of employment status, John Ruckman from part-time to full-time police officer, effective October the 10th, 2017. And the police department is requesting the employment of John Ruckman to full-time police officer effective October the 10th, 2017, at the starting pay rate of $43,923. And this would be a level two, right?
What was he before?
No, he was just part-time.
Okay. So, yes, he would be unemployed, yes. So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee March, second by trustee Jones.
He wasn't a pensionable person.
No. No.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hamm?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Just real quick on the pension, one, two, IMRF the same way. The new hires on IMRF, if they haven't already been in level one or a level two, and they don't get to retire till they're 67, so that's all change, just saying.
All right. Item E, set October 31st, 2017, turn-of-treat hours for the village of Peotown. We had a short discussion about this at the last meeting, and it was the chief's suggestion that we do turn-of-treat hours from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And that would be on Halloween on October 31st.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee March, second by trustee Bowden.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hamm?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Item F, review and approve Strewbar Electric Company Incorporated estimate for village hall and meeting room light fixture upgrade. We actually have Strewbar Electric, and we also have a quote from Excel Electric.
Is that for the village hall?
Well, actually, one is for the, one of the Strewbar, I don't know if this was in the packet or not, or if I just had that in my packet.
The one for the 4100?
4100.
That's the village?
That's the village hall, that's the meeting room.
And upstairs.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was jumping.
We staff recommended that they would, even though the other ones were a little bit cheaper, like about 1,300 overall, we recommended we use Strewbar because they do this and the other one, and are locally owned and operated, and they're, they're not the lowest price, qualified better, but they are qualified better. The attorney can correct me if I'm wrong.
No, it's not a required.
Correct.
I was jumping to the other one. Yes, so, no, my fault. So, yes, and this is the install new LED bulbs in the boardroom, 16 lights, install retro kits and 17 lights at the village hall with new LED bulbs for a total of 4,100 hours.
So, that's these?
That's these and upstairs.
So, Stacy can see again. Do we have a projected cost savings? Are we going to invest as much money, what the payback is going to the LED?
It's, I don't have a projected cost savings for you, but just from looking at the lights, these lights have driven me crazy for the last two and a half years, and they need to be done.
They'll always take color.
Yes, they need to be worked.
So, it's a mind-saver.
Yes. It will, it will have a cost savings, but, you know, it's just more of common sense than anything, I say.
And Stacy won't be up there taking payments and have the light go off.
Is it qualified better at Union Shop? Is that, like, what's the qualification?
Well, what, the, the attorney mentioned that we do not have.
This is not a required.
It's not a required.
It's under by a required, they're not, okay. It's still public works, they still have to.
They still have to follow up.
Yes. They're on the edge, but. This is more of an upgrade and maintenance of the village hall on this particular project. Is there a motion to approve the $4100 price to upgrade the lights in the village hall? For Strewbar?
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Jones, second by trustee.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hamm?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Review quotes of Coolatch &amp; Suns Heating and Cooling and JTR Heating and Air Conditioning for Public Works Building Boiler and for the Public Works Building Office, air conditioning and award projects. So, looking at the two bids, I was trying to do this comparison. We look at the boiler first. The Coolatch bid is for a 95% efficient boiler, two zones, one for office, one for shop, two programmable thermostats, all piping to manifolds, complete installation of gas piping, complete installation of electrical, LP conversion, all material labor provided by Coolatch &amp; Suns Heating and Cooling. And that total bid was $11,800. You go over to JTR for the boiler, theirs was a 94% efficient, option one, two easy pump assembly, insulated is piping gas, electric and water, for a total of $11,620. And they had an option two to an 82% efficient, which I don't think we're interested in from conversations with public works. And then if you look at the AC system, Coolatch air handler installed in attic area, insulated duct work in attic area, American Standard 13 CRAC, electric work included, all material and labor provided by Coolatch &amp; Suns for $6,300. JTR, one carrier fan coil, 2.5 ton, honeywell $6,000 with Wi-Fi thermostat, insulated pipe, return grill, disconnected whip, electric both high and low voltage, total of $8475. So, it was, I spoke with trustee Hack about this, and I think was his recommendation or his thought was to go with Coolatch &amp; Suns, who is also the local and the low bidder.
For the combined project?
For the combined, for both projects, for the boiler and for the air.
And it makes sense to have one person?
Do both.
Do both.
Yes, yes.
I like the 10-year parts and labor.
Yes.
That's big.
10-year parts and labor, lifetime warranty, and workmanship.
Does the, he doesn't say anything about the type of thermostat or?
Yeah, I don't, just said two programmable thermostats. It doesn't say Wi-Fi.
Oh, that's, I don't understand.
But it says programmable.
Oh, okay, yeah.
On that, on the boiler.
You're right, yeah. I knew we go with Coolatch &amp; Suns on both, the heating and air conditioning.
Correct. So, for the total of $11,800 on the boiler side and $6,300 on the, the AC side.
I'll second that.
Motion by trustee March, second by trustee Bowden.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hamm?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Review proposals of Strewbar Electric Company and Excel Electric Incorporated for the electrical work at the Public Works Building and award project. And we have two bids. First is from Strewbar Electric, which is install a new 480-volt panel, install a new 240-volt panel, install 15 new highway, high bay T5 lights and new switches, install exit emergency light, install seven new GFI outlets in shop, install four new LED lights outside, wire the garage door and extra to clean up wiring, for a total of $21,000. From Excel, we have furnish install 12 LED high bay fixtures, replace exterior wall pack fixtures with new LED, furnish and install power to east end door motor, furnish and install receptacles at east end, doesn't say how many, cost based on using existing conduit and wire. So, then they have add alternate for installing new service panels, which is in the Strewbar bid, so that's an additional $8480. So, if you add the $8480 to the 11, 236, you get 19,716. But their cost was based on using existing conduit and wire, where Strewbar had in the $2,500 to clean up and get the wiring to where it needs to be. So, it was the recommendation of talking with Kevin, his thought process, they asked me to pass on, was to award the bid to Strewbar Electric for the amount of $21,000. Now, I can't.
It is over $20,000.
Right.
So, I, a motion to waive competitive bidding on this first, and then if you want to do it tonight.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, I assume you did. So.
So, we need a motion to waive competitive bidding?
Competitive bidding on this.
On this project.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Jones, second by trustee March.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Hamm?
Yes.
And Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
So, then a motion to accept the bid from Strewbar Electric Company in the amount of $21,000 for the electrical work at the new Public Works Building.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Hamm, second by trustee Jones.
Mr. Hamm?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
I have a question on this, though. Who wrote the specs on this? I mean, it seemed a little bit different.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an answer for you on that, but that's why I was trying to put them together to do, you know, a cost comparison.
Sure.
And it was, either they didn't write their bids according to the specs, or?
It just seems odd that it wouldn't be.
Right.
And it's, everything we need, I mean, this is complete, I mean, it's not like we're cutting off anything, or?
As far as the boiler, the air and the electric goes, my understanding is that's everything that we need.
Good.
And that's money we actually had, you know, budgeted for this project.
Is the, the office lighting included in the Strewbar one, or no? Because that was an add-on for the Excel one. I didn't know if that was, it says office LED lighting or something.
Okay, add alternate for office area with LED lights? Yeah, I, I didn't quite understand what that meant in that Excel bid. I don't, I don't.
I'm obviously comfortable with that Strewbar bid, gave me everything it needed. But I think him and Kevin went over the specs the best they could. As usual, when the electric companies come in, they got a whole different idea of what should be.
Item I, discussion regarding the parkway trees. I brought this back to the board for discussion. We had 12 trees that we were getting ready to plant on Corning and Main Street, and those are all understory trees that we were looking at planting. And the discussion that we had here when we talked about that originally was to make sure that we talked to the homeowners, where the trees were going to go, make sure that, you know, they were okay with having the trees, because to me, putting a tree someplace where somebody doesn't want it, it's, to me, it just doesn't make sense, because that tree's not going to be cared for. I understand what Public Works is trying to do, we're trying to do a streetscape, you know, I, I understand that. But to me, making somebody take a tree that they don't want in a small town like us, I just don't think it makes any sense to me. We've had three out of eight addresses, is it eight or nine addresses? I think, I, I grabbed my list. Anyway, three people came to the village hall to express that they did not want trees. It was 400, 412 and 416 Corning all made a point of coming here and expressing that. One of the other things I think, just to think about as we plant these trees, which I never gave any consideration, but somebody mentioned it to me today, was that we've got to really be careful where, with our, where our storm sewers are located, where we're planting parkway trees, because we do have a couple of areas in town now where planting parkway trees, because we do have a couple of areas in town now where the parkway trees have really infiltrated into the storm sewers, Jean Street, and I think Hawthorne were the two areas that were planted out to me, where, and we have so much infiltration into the storm sewer that there's, they can't be even rotted when they come in to rot the sewers now, it's just really creating that much of an issue. So especially in some of the older parts of town, you know, we've gotta really be cognizant of where the storm sewers are located, when we go to plant parkway trees where they haven't been previously, and new, new construction, you know, it's a little bit different, because I think you can kind of work around that, but in existing areas, it makes it a little bit trickier.
I think the approved list of trees, I think they specifically are trees that looks that don't
Okay, well, that's good.
Are invasive, or I don't know what, I don't know what the term is, but I think that was one of the considerations on that list.
Okay, well, that's good, I like, I didn't know, I didn't have an answer for that.
Yeah.
You know, when, when they stopped to talk to me, but, which is something that I wanted to throw out there, because I hadn't even thought about that.
I spoke with Kevin, the way they do it in Frankfurt, and he says that they make the circle, they drive a stake in, this is proposed tree.
Right.
And then if they hear back from the people, they may discuss it, they might do it.
But he also told me that they're planting, you know, a lot more trees than twelve, you know, at a time. To me, I would rather see us get our list together and send a letter, I mean, we could write a letter from the village and mail a letter, you know, to the homeowner a few weeks ahead of time, and do that, do the same thing with the circle and the stake, but I'd rather take that extra step, you know, if we're planting three hundred trees, it'd be a different story.
Sure.
But if we're doing twelve or twenty, I think it's really within our ability to communicate a little bit more.
I spoke with the Village Home Way this afternoon, and they, they are like the Tree City, tremendous following, they've won local awards, state awards, national awards, and they have four arbers on staff, forester, uh, they have seminars, uh, they are in it totally, and, uh, I talked to the fellow that was in charge at Lake, and I said, you know, we'd like to come up and see how you do it, what you do, and it's, it's unbelievable what they do, and he said they'd be happy to host us to come up, and, and they've got letters, and they do make a mailing to whatever, and then if they get a response back, a negative response, then they actually go out and approach the homeowner.
Why, and that's, and to me, that makes complete and total sense, I'd rather have that, I think if we have that communication ahead of time, you know, we might be able to, to make the person understand.
Sure. There were a lot of benefits, he was listing them all, and real estate values, and energy consumption, and how much water makes it to the storm sewers, and that the trees absorb, on and off, but one thing I found was interesting, they planted twenty-one hundred trees, they had eight negative responses. What if you have three out of twelve?
We had three out of eight, or three out of nine, yeah.
I have this.
But like I said, I think a lot of that may come from the lack of communication, too, you know, just put in the circle and, you know, that's it, and that's why I, I wanted a little more communication with the resident prior to the tree going in, so, I mean, I, I don't have a problem, we've got time to still do these trees.
Sure.
But we need to figure out a plan, and I see Dr. March has got a letter here.
We serve the entire community, so if we've got the, what'd you say, three addresses that don't want them, and a couple addresses, got two trees.
I think one had, I don't know if one had two, or two had two, I'd have to look at the list.
So we've got alternatives we can approach.
Okay.
So would, that's what you suggested?
Yes.
We go to those that we've got next available?
Mm-hmm.
And see what...
Let's, you know, get a list put together, let's communicate with them, and then move forward.
Yeah, I just threw together a draft of a letter, and, you know, you can change it or use it, or throw it away, whatever you want to do.
No, I just give it to a letter.
But, um, yeah, I would suggest, like I said, mail them out to the addresses that we want to do, and...
So when you guys get, when you get the list put together, then, you know, bring it to the hall.
Yeah.
And then we can get the letters, you know, mailed out.
Yeah.
And then, because it's, it's a lot of times it's hard to knock on a door and catch somebody.
Yeah.
But, you know, if we even send it certified, just to make sure that we know that it got there, you know?
Sure.
I think that's, that way we have proof that we've communicated.
Peter, you have this in work?
Yes, I can email it to you.
Email it to me?
Yep. And then while we're talking about trees, um, you, we've really satisfied all the requirements for the Tree City USA, we just have to basically put together the application.
Okay.
So, um, Greg, I've got the, it's, it's pretty simple, there's just, you know, you just gotta attach like our organs that we came up with.
Okay.
And, um, the proclamation that we did for Arbor Day. So, I'll leave that with you, and if you can, if you have any questions about it, you need me to do anything else, let me know.
Sure. So our next move should be to contact the new individuals who want to put trees in, and let...
Well, get your list together, and bring your list to the Village Hall, bring it to, bring it to Greg, and then we'll...
You'll contact?
Yeah, then we'll, we're gonna mail them a letter.
Oh, okay.
We're gonna mail them a certified letter, but we'll figure out a timeline, you know, and that way we can communicate, and if they don't want it, then we'll, you know, move on to the next step or whatever, but, and if, you know, if we have to, we can go knock on a door, too, I just want some form of communication, you know, the nod.
On the tree matter, too, maybe next year we can consider moving the leaf pickup ahead a little bit, it seems like the, the dry weather this year's really had a lot of leaves falling, I'm seeing piles.
They just had the machine out today, because they hadn't, they hadn't had it up and running yet, that it hadn't been serviced to, to bring it out yet, but it's kind of hard for them to get that out when they're still heavy into the brush end of it, too, but, and I drove through town, and there wasn't, not a lot of leaves out there, there's a few piles, but there's not a, a ton, but I know that they're gonna possibly get going a little bit later this week, but it definitely starts up next Monday is the...
Well, did they say they're doing another pickup, branch pickup?
Branch pickup, the last branch pickup is
The twenty-third, like two weeks, right?
Correct. But so leaves, leaves and branches will be going on together for two weeks.
Simultaneously for a while, yeah.
But, you know, doing it four weeks or, you know, whatever, that's a little bit
Tough.
Of a strain with the, with the crew that we have.
So the twenty-third is the, because there's two pickups, obviously, one north of Corning and one south.
Yes, yes.
So, what is the date sign?
I'm, I'm trying, I gotta go back and look and see if I have.
The branch pickup?
Yeah.
Well, today was, uh, south of Corning.
So next week would be north, and the following one would be south again?
Yep.
You had it?
Yeah.
So the twenty-third would be the south of Corning?
Yes.
Okay.
The same machine does both, is that correct?
No.
No.
Two different machines.
I don't think people, the number of guys.
Number, it's, it's the crew to man the machines is the problem, trying to run them both at the same time, it's... It gets a little tough.
Sure.
Yeah, and I'll kind of speak for Bob a little bit, you gotta, you gotta be careful moving dates on these guys, because they, they plan for the year, and they've used data from the years before, when they're out and doing things, and, yeah, sometimes you miss it, you know, the leaves come down a little earlier, or sometimes they come down a little late, and then they get snowed on.
Right.
So, I mean, there's a lot of that.
And that's...
Well, that's my thought process, is the weather is conducive early October, and the workload doesn't change, as long as somebody leaves out there.
It's like the grinding and everything, I mean, it's, everything's gotta come, and it's due time, you know what I'm saying? That's, we only got a few guys, so, that's, that's the hard part, more personnel than anything else.
Right, I mean, it's the branch.
It's not that, not that they don't want to do it, it's just
Right, right.
Getting everything else done. Mr. Bellada, do you have anything for the board that you want to talk about?
Yeah, just give you guys a quick update?
Sure.
That's good.
Please.
The appraisals came back for the water and wastewater system, so, just, I have them, you, Greg, or staff, Quayley, it's fucking megabytes, so emailing them was not an option, so, they liked their pictures of these appraisers, so, but I just want to give you an update, the values came in, Goodman Associates, Heepin Associates, and then Edward J. Batis and Associates, were the three firms they used in, in the same order, Jerry Hartman is a professional engineer with Goodman, Guy Christianson from Chamblin Associates was teamed up with Heepin Associates, and Kelly Simpson from Flynn, Flynn Engineering was with Edward J. Batis Associates. So the three appraisals combined, the first one came in at twelve-five, one at thirteen, one at twelve-six-five, for an average of twelve point seven one six million. The breakdown was the average on the water was five point three million, and some change, and the sewer was about seven point four million, so we knew the sewer was worth more, just obviously because of the plant, so they came in really close to where your consultant said they would come in, and, so we were, we were pleased that, on the aqua front, we didn't want them below, thank God, but that's always our risk, but they came in very solid, so, you know, with the twelve-three, we're, we're first team at four, plus the additional eight million improvements, the overall package to the village is twenty million, but the appraisals came in at twelve-seven, so we'll be submitting these to Illinois Commerce Commission. Upon the submission of testimony, we have actually a conference call with Scott Struck from the ICC tomorrow, talking to him about the filing of the testimony, but it's going well, there's, really don't see any issues, some of these, just getting through little hurdles with how we adopt your rates and how they do it administratively through the Illinois Commerce Commission, but nobody at the ICC has a problem with the deal, just getting through the logistics of it, but it's going well. We're having bi-weekly meetings on the, the water source coming in, how we're gonna tie into it, where we're gonna, what the routing's gonna be, I talked to Troy, we're gonna get together here soon, and, and Greg and staff, and look at some routing possibilities, so the plan is to have that well within service by, before the January first of two thousand and twenty, now a lot could happen, the easements, rightaways are usually the holdups of anything like that, but on that water main, we will have that done hopefully by the end of this month. The, the main for Mantino, all of it U.P., so that's the main that we would tie into, so that's going very, very well, we just have to have it in by the end of the year, but we actually have our board of directors for Aqua America coming to Illinois, we're real proud of that, so we're kind of put the rush on to get it done, so, um, this, the chairman of the board could actually turn the first, the faucet on for the first time and have the first drink of water out of that twenty million dollar pipeline, so we're excited, so, if there's any questions, it's going well.
Good, we haven't had anything, Jim, locally for a while, should we have some kind of open house or something, maybe in November?
Yeah.
We can do that. Put together.
Maybe I could suggest maybe after first year, because then November starts the holidays.
Sure, we can do that, too, I'm just, I'm just saying, we, we probably want to keep the citizens
Right, absolutely.
In the loop.
Especially, I think maybe if you do January, and then if we want, we can do another one when it gets closer to closing, or right after closing.
Okay.
You know, we're all for, I, I really want to educate the community, especially prior to January first of two thousand and twenty.
Right.
When the rates change, that's important for us, and I know it's important for you, so, and if there's ever an organization...
We want to generate some excitement, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Do you have trustees, or do you guys have an organization, want us to do a presentation in front of us, Rotary, the Chamber, homeowner association, we appear, big or small, let's know, and we'd be glad to do it, educate everybody.
Good, when is the projected closing, roughly?
I would say probably mid-second quarter of eighteen, so one nice thing to do with the ICC this time is, we're doing a lot of it verbally before we file a formal testimony, so they said, hey, let's get this all worked out verbally, file a testimony, so it goes quicker, which we hope to get a, a decision out of them, hopefully by the end of first quarter, and then usually have about a thirty-day period, we close shortly after that, so once I see the schedule, where it's going, then we're gonna start having transition meetings with your staff, um, and that's when we'll be meeting probably weekly on that, and we put agendas together and follow it, and do, make sure the billing's all set, and make sure no hiccups on that, and we put a lot of work into it, probably the ninety days before close, there's a lot of, a lot of efforts on both parties to get it done, so we, we just want a smooth transition, especially with the billing, because that's what everybody sees.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you for the update, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Questions in the press? Anything else before we go to closed session? Okay, I need a motion to go into closed session to consider the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, and also the performance of an occupant of a public office.
So moved.
So, motion by trustee March, second by trustee Jones.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Okay, we will go into closed session, there will be no action coming out of closed session.